Okay Commissioners.
Chair, you're on mute.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Chair Adams. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which Commissioner members are participating this evening. Commissioner Holmes.
Present.
Commissioner Lago.
Present.
And Commissioner Speck.
Here.
Perfect. Let the record show that Commissioners McCann and Winter are excused and absent from the meeting tonight. We are now at Commu- at Commission Communications. Commission, any communications? Staff, we're now staff communications. Staff, any communications?
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jenna Fox, current Planning Manager. Anis Latinsky, the Planning Division Manager, is not here tonight, so you've got me. I don't have any staff communications, but we are here for you. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks Jenna. New business. There are two items on the agenda tonight, both of which are continued from last week because we did not have a quorum. I am changing the order of the items on the agenda. We will hear the Meadowlark application first, followed by the Birchwood annexation application next. Let's begin with LU three two zero two four dash zero one zero seven four. Meadowlark Place case file numbers DDR three two zero two four dash zero one zero seven zero and LLD one two zero two four dash zero one zero seven one. The applicant has the burden of providing or approving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. Now criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are: Development Code Section forty point zero three Facilities Review, forty point two three point one five point three point C Downtown Design Review Three, forty point four seven point one five point one point C Legal Lot Determination. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interests interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may include, may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require Commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any Commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Holmes.
I do not.
Commissioner Lago.
None for me.
And Commissioner. Commissioner Preck.
Uh, Commissioner Speck, I don't have anything to declare.
No.
Nothing to declare, okay. Does any member of the audience wish to question a Commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenged right of any Commissioner to participate in this hearing? All right, I am not seeing any let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation, followed by Commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the Commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Lena Smith, Associate Planner. I am presenting tonight with Associate Planner Elena Sasson, and I'll go ahead and share my screen. Tonight, we will be presenting on the Meadowlark Place project. The applicant's proposal is for a new mixed-use building with a hundred and four affordable housing units for residents age fifty-five and older and a childcare facility on the ground floor. The project is located at the current Beaverton Community Center site across the street from Beaverton City Library and down the street from Beaverton City Park. The site is one point three seven acres in size and is in the regional center, Old Town Zone, in the Downtown Design District. The site also has frontage on three public streets. The applicant requests approval for two applications tonight, and the first is a Downtown Design Review Three. The project meets the threshold for Downtown Design Review Three because the applicant requests to exceed the maximum sixty-five-foot building height for the subject zone by five feet six inches. The project complies or can be conditioned to comply with all applicable downtown design standards and guidelines, and this is further detailed in the staff report. I'll go ahead and pass it off to Elena.
Thank you Lena. So let's just mention, the applicant addressed a combination of design standards and guidelines to achieve architectural variety by incorporating vertical and horizontal recesses, changes in height, and ground floor setbacks. Staff would also like to highlight a few key features of the proposal, including an entry plaza near the intersection of Southwest Hall and Fifth Street. This plaza provides shaded seating areas, which abut the public right-of-way and nearby TriMet bus stop. The entry plaza is also connected to a covered plaza, or sorry, to a covered entry in the breezeway, which provides a view further into the site containing a courtyard, garden area, and outdoor play area, as well as the onsite parking lot. As a result of fairly recent changes to state law and the Beaverton Development Code, there is no longer a minimum parking requirement. However, the applicant is elected to provide nineteen onsite parking spaces, which is within the maximum standard parking rate permitted for the proposed uses in site. The onsite parking lot is located behind the building and it's largely screened from the, but from view of the abutting public streets. And there's a consolidated ingress and egress that's located along the southwest Tucker frontage. The onsite parking lot also is designed to accommodate school buses that will be used to transport children to and from the site for the proposed childcare facility. Next slide please. The second application mentioned is a legal lot determination. This is required for the site because the lot in its current configuration has not previously been part of a recorded plat. This isn't uncommon in older areas of Beaverton where land divisions occurred through deed or before the land division process was codified through, in the Beaverton Development Code. So to establish this lot as a legal law of record going forward, the applicant submitted this legal law determination application accompanied by a deed history which demonstrated that the approval criteria for a legal lot determination is met. And to finalize this determination, staff recommend a condition of approval that the applicant submit a final plat to Washington County to, to record the, the final law. Next slide please. And with that, staff recommends approval of Meadowlark Place, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And staff is open to any questions. Thank you. Chair Adams, I believe you're muted again.
I am. Thank you. I appreciate you pointing that out. Commissioner Holmes, are there any questions with regard to the proposed application?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lago, any questions?
No questions at the moment Chair, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Speck?
Um, I don't have any questions either.
All right. Thank you. The applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
All right. Good evening everyone. Thank you Chair Adams, Commissioners, and staff for letting us present today on Meadowlark Place. My name is Christopher Eibling. I'm with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, the developer, owner, and residential service provider at Meadowlark Place. And so today, we will go over, give a summary of our project, introduce who we are. I'll give a, some context and overview of the project, and Brian Carlton from Carlton Heart will go over the design and material choices for the project. Next slide please. All right, so our development team for Meadowlark Place, as I mentioned, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, SEPA, we are the developer behind Meadowlark Place. Our co-developer is DCM Communities. Our architect is Carlton Heart Architecture. Our general contractor is LMC Construction. Community Action is our head start provider, and financing partners so far are the City of Beaverton and Washington County. Next slide please. And with that, I'll hand it off to Gillian to go over the SEPA introduction.
Thanks Christopher. Hello, good evening. My name is Gillian. I am the Housing Director at Community Partners for Affordable Housing, and I wanted, we wanted to share a little bit about what we do. We were founded over three decades ago and have been operating in Washington County that entire time. We've served many communities across Washington County. We have a couple of developments currently in Beaverton and around Beaverton. We're very much connected to this work here. We're dedicated to building affordable housing that has, that's a high quality, and we like to say that we do five things. So we build affordable housing. We maintain it into the future. We support our residents through our robust resident services program, which includes eviction prevention services, connecting residents with mental health services when they need it, and community building at each and every one of our communities. Another one of our resident services programs is called Thriving in Place, and that is our senior program. What we provide, resident services specifically geared to seniors. Some of those might be doing chair yoga to keep everybody active. We have, there was a bingo game at the Barcelona in Beaverton this afternoon. And we also do things that help people stay in their housing, such as we have a grant from Care Oregon to help people who are struggling with keeping their apartments tidy and sanitary to come in and do cleaning for them, so they can maintain their apartment and stay in their housing as long as they want to stay in their housing. The fourth thing we do is we work with the supportive housing services, Tax Levy, and provide homeless services. We provide both rapid rehousing and case management to folks who are homeless and seeking housing in Washington County. And then the fifth thing we do is we consider ourselves fierce advocates of affordable housing in Washington County and across the state. We currently have eleven apartment communities, five hundred and thirty-one homes. Actually, we just opened a new development, so that's up over six hundred now. We've got about a thousand residents with folks moving in right now in Tuallaton as we speak. These are a couple of our, our communities. Both of these are close to you. We've got Cedar Grove and Villett, which is in Beaverton, which is a development on the corner of Murray and Cornell Road. And that's, we opened during the pandemic, actually. I'm going to the next slide. Right, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you Gillian. And so I think it's helpful also before we get into the overview of the project to provide some background and context on the project, provide perspective on how this project fits in the overall community development vision for Downtown Beaverton, as well as the community needs to which Meadowlark Place responds. So for background, you know, the initial concept of what is now Meadowlark Place emerges from the city's early community engagement process when developing a strategy for allocating affordable housing resources. So this goes all the way back to twenty nineteen, when the city was developing its local implementation strategy. And so the feedback and input received from community members identified affordable housing for seniors as a top development priority. And so when evaluating all of the city-owned sites, this Beaverton landed on the current site as the best suited for supporting this population, and that's due to both its close proximity to critical resources, as well as aligning with the high-density development of the city's downtown core. And so the city then circulated a request for proposals looking for submissions that could provide A, a substantial amount of deeply affordable housing units for seniors, as well as one that could provide an active, community-serving ground floor use that would align with the development vision of a vibrant urban downtown core. And so DCM and SEPA's proposal was awarded the project in late twenty twenty-two. And shortly after that, we began facilitating a series of community engagement events to inform the design, layout, and programming of Meadowlark Place. So that's everything that is highlighted in that blue box. You know, we spoke at NAC meetings, we held a booth at the Beaverton Farmers Market, which is located just at a corner to the site. We held focus groups, as well as an open house at the library. All of that input, which then went into informing the design of our project. All right, next slide please. All right, the project itself, Meadowlark Place, is a mixed-use affordable housing development entirely devoted to serving seniors. There will additionally be a head start that will operate out of the ground floor. It will provide a hundred and four new affordable homes that will consist primarily of one-bedrooms, as well as some studio apartments. For resident community, as I mentioned, this is entirely devoted to seniors aged fifty-five years and older. There's a substantial amount of deeply affordable units that would be affordable to seniors who earn at or below thirty percent of area median income. So seniors who are living on social security, for example. Thirty-five of the units will be the very affordable housing units, affordable for those earning at or below fifty percent of area median income. Thirty units will be set aside for permanent supportive housing, as well as will have leasing priority for seniors who are transitioning out of farmworker housing due to our partnership with Vienna Star, who is a community-based organization in Washington County. All right, next slide please. So certainly one thing that really attracted us to this project was the location, particularly when thinking about serving the population, serving seniors at Meadowlark Place. And that's because, as we had mentioned, this site will be located directly in front of the downtown library, as well as in close proximity to Elsie Sir Senior Center. And so these two community resources and assets were critical in thinking about the programming that we would partner with and benefit from when serving this population. It is also within walking distance to the downtown core, which makes it in close proximity to critical resources such as grocery stores and banks, the post office, as well as service centers. And so understanding that we were working with an urban redevelopment infill project that would be working on a limited site with a limited parking lot, we felt that Meadowlark Place would be well-suited to provide the type of climate-friendly development that this site would need. Meadowlark Place, as I mentioned, will be housing seniors living on very low incomes. And so from our portfolio experience, we understand that these tend to be residents who are less reliant on personal vehicles. This site will additionally be well-supported by public transportation. There's a high-frequency bus line that runs directly adjacent to the development with connections to various transit centers in the area. And so this positions Meadowlark Place to be a development that really minimizes the use of single occupancy car usage and promote alternative, climate-friendly transportation uses. We have designed the ground floor use so that it provides a mix of both resident uses, as well as those that serve the surrounding community. And so we're incredibly excited to be able to partner with Community Action, who will provide head start program on the ground floor on the east wing. So that head start includes three classrooms that will serve up to fifty-four students. And you know, given the early community engagement and feedback, identified early childcare resources as a community need, we felt like this was the perfect fit in that head start would not only address a community need, but then also be something that provides a mutual benefit for both the seniors as well as the head start students. You know, a lot has been documented about the benefits of co-locating intergenerational programming with senior housing, then that it provides a, contributes to a vibrancy in the building and offers opportunities for partnerships. And so we definitely see several areas of collaboration between the head start and the affordable housing side, whether it's volunteer opportunities with the head start partnerships with our residential services team. And so in the western wing, most of that space will be devoted to residential amenities such as a community room with a kitchen. We have a bike storage. We have residential services office, as well as meeting rooms. But then we're also, we're additionally devoting some room for a community flex space that'll be open to community organizations to rent free of charge. And with that, I will hand it off to Brian.
Right, thanks you. Thank you Christopher. Commissioners, I'm Brian Carlton, Principal at Carlton Heart Architecture. Pleased to be with you tonight. I'm going to run you through some of the design concepts that we were employing in the, in the project relative to design standards and developing in Downtown Beaverton. The first thing I wanted to discuss was the orientation of the project. We were orienting the project to the north and northeast to really focus towards the, the public amenities of the library and the park across from the library. And so we're really focused on pointing north towards Downtown Beaverton and those amenities. Our massing is set up so that we're recognizing the, Hall Boulevard is our primary major street. So our, our strongest urban wall is Long Hall Boulevard. With Fifth Street being a little bit lower density, we've pulled the building back from that to create our public plaza in the northwest corner. Also by doing that and tilting the building the way we have, we're able to save a cedar tree out there in the northwest, northwest corner of the site. I think it's thirty-two inch caliper existing cedar tree, so we're able to save that. And then Tucker being a local access road and our, and our quietest road will be fronted that with the, the smallest facade in the project. From a massing standpoint, we wanted to vary the massing as we moved around the site to give the project some, to break up the mass. It is a large project. Five and six stories with a hundred and four units. So we wanted to break that mass down and compartmentalize the, the building. And so we've, we've got a mass that distinctly fronts Hall Boulevard, and then the, the mass that looks towards Fifth Street with a linkage in between in our entry plaza and our primary entry. We've stepped the, the massing down, or the tallest part, the sixth-story part of the building We've stepped the the massing down or the tallest part, the sixth-story part of the building is up is the northern wing and, you know, facing northeast. And we put that there because that is our more institutional, public-facing side. We have St. Cecilia's across Tucker, and then we have the library to the north. We stepped the building down when we hit Hall Boulevard because at that point, we are integrating into the residential neighborhood as Hall transitions from residential into the downtown area. So we have the Menon Hall Townhomes to our south, and we have single-family residences across Hall Boulevard. So we wanted to lower the height at at that west wing. This this does represent where we're asking for the exception on the heights limit. The sixty-five-foot heights limit can be exceeded up to a maximum of seventy-five feet with your determination. And our tallest wing at six stories, we're at seventy feet, so we're exceeding that by five feet. But then we stepped down on Hall Boulevard to five stories where we're approximately five or seven feet below that height limit, the sixty-five-foot heights limit. So we've really tried to vary that massing to to break the building up. We see this site as a key transition site as we're moving from the more residential neighborhoods to our south up into the the public and commercial spaces to our north and downtown Beaverton. So we've treated the site the same way in our own transitions, where we've got the quieter, more secluded spaces to the south. And then as we move to the north, we go through the semi-public spaces of our own entry plaza and then out into the full public plaza in our northeast corner. So we're trying to develop that same transition within our site as the city is transitioning. So. Next slide, please, Michael. So in terms of materials that we're using, we've developed a very simple palette of materials, but very high-quality, long-lasting. It's primarily brick and metal panels and metal flashing. So long-term durable materials with permanent finishes, very little long-term maintenance needed on the facades of the building. The brick we're using, we're employing a family of warm colors, but we're varying the colors as we use them around the building. So we've got different, we've got light and we've got dark. I'll go into that more when we look at the next slide. But we're we're using that to give the project depth and variation. Then we have a metal panel, prefinished metal panel siding that is used for certain detailing, as well as a marker of our primary entrance. So so let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, Michael. So in looking at our facade, this is the north facade along Fifth Street, which is the longest of our facades, you can see the variations in heights that we're employing along that facade to break up the massing, as well as the the variations in and out to create depth and shadow lines. We're using the darker color brick to form the base of the building, just in terms of of massing and complexity. We are, you know, that occasionally goes vertical, but primarily it's forming the base, and then we get to a lighter brick up above that. We use the dark brick also to detail some recesses in the facade. You can see the long, narrow recesses between bays of windows that periodically happen throughout the facade. And then in the the tallest mass in the center of the of the facade is our stair tower. And with that, in order to give that some visual interest, we're kind of using a mix of brick to create a stippling effect as it moves upward from dark to light, where we change the mix of brick as we move upward to give it some texture. And then, so our west facade and east facade, the east facade is facing St. Cecilia's across Tucker. And so it is our our narrowest, smallest part of the building to to keep that scale smaller. The west facade faces Hall. And so that's, as I described it earlier, kind of our strongest urban wall that goes Long Hall Boulevard. In all cases, we're treating the ground floor with a great deal of care, that pedestrian zone, a lot of windows, a lot of opening and overhangs to protect the pedestrian. And then this speaks more to our pedestrian experience. The entry plaza is seen from the corner of Fifth and Hall with the with the entry to the building being marked by the green metal panel but being pushed back so that we can create this public plaza. Until we get to that green wall, it is intended to be public space. And then, once we cross there, it becomes the semi-private public or entry to the building. But we do, we are intending that this is public space for pedestrians coming by. And then in our commercial entry, further down Fifth, you can see in the right-hand corner, that's our entry to our head start program. Along that same facade, we have a recess for overhangs. And we also have setback that allows for benches and parents and waiting for children out there, that type of thing. I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Questions of the applicant with regards to the proposed application, Commissioner Holmes?
No, I'm good. That was great. Thank you.
Commissioner Lago.
I did have a question. I'm not sure if it's really a question for y'all, but during this construction period, will access to the Beaverton City Library or the Farmers Market change for the public? Or will that not be affected by the construction?
I I can take that. It should not be affected by the construction. We will we will fenced off the site. Construction activities will take place pretty strictly on-site. Of course, we'll have material deliveries happening occasionally where we'll have to flag the streets in the intersection. But but construction activities will be contained on the site because we have that open space where a parking lot is, we have lay-down storage materials, so we shouldn't be interfering with public streets much at all.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Great question. Any questions, Commissioner Speck?
No, I just commend you guys for the the market need that you guys would be serving with this project. It'd be a wonderful amenity for the city.
Great. We are now at the public testimony portion of this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And I am not seeing any hands raised. So staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony in favor via web. Now is the time for public testimony in opposition to the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And staff has informed us that we are not receiving any questions. And we have now is the time for those who neither are in favor nor opposed to speak. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And staff has said that we do not have any public testimony, neither in favor nor opposed via the web. Now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony portion and do not provide any new evidence. Do commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Chair, Chair, this is Robin McIntyre. I just wanted to 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 jump in, just to let you know that because we didn't get any testimony in opposition, there is no need for the applicant to rebut, so we can just move on to the the next spot, which is questions for staff.
Okay. And the staff, have any have any final comments or questions?
No final comments, but we're happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I am not seeing any questions. This apparently is a slam dunk tonight. So with final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. Now is the time for deliberation. As in standard procedure, I will randomly call commissioners for discussion on the application. Commissioner Holmes? Is there a motion? Given the questions on the application or discussion?
No, I think I'm in agreement with the staff as report for recommendation for approval.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Speck?
Same, I am in agreement with staff's recommendation to pass.
And Commissioner? And Commissioner Lago?
I feel the same way. The staff's approval with the condition seems like a good idea in this case.
Right. Is there a motion to continue on or approve or denial?
I would move for approval.
I'll take a stab at it.
Holmes, do you, would you second that, or?
Yes, I second that. I was gonna take a stab at the script that I think we have to state.
Okay.
I move for approval of DDR slash LLD-one-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-zero-seven-one dash LU-three-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-zero-seven-four Metalark Place, based on the facts and findings presented in the staff report dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. And is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Like, no discussion. A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Holmes?
Yea.
Commissioner Lago?
Yea.
Commissioner Speck?
Yea.
And Chair Adams is a yea as well. The final vote on the motion is a pass with all five commissioners or all four commissioners voting yea. Motion passes. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral or written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the Rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. The second item on the agenda is the application for LU-three-two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-zero-five-five eighty-one-fifty Southwest Birchwood Annexation, case file number CPMA-three-two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-five-three. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code Comprehensive Plan and any applicable Beaverton code provision. Criteria must be addressed in the hearing are Comprehensive Plan Section, one point five point one point B, Criteria for Legislative and Quasi-Judicial Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity, great word, to allow the city to respond to the issues may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Holmes?
I do not.
Commissioner Lago?
None for me, Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Speck?
None for me as well.
Okay. And let the records show that Chair Adams has none as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits, or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? And I am not seeing anything. Let the records show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff as applicant will give a presentation, followed by commissioners' questions of staff. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak to up to five minutes, five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. The planning commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Okay, great. Hopefully you can all hear me tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and share before I forget. Okay. And there must be one more moment so I can find my notes slide. Okay, great. So good evening, Chair Adams and commissioners. I'm Lauren Russell, an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Brian Martin, the long-range planning manager, is also here and will be available for any questions as we go through this presentation. But for now, this is gonna look just a little bit different than the original staff report that was posted on the twelfth, as well as you may have seen a previous version of this presentation. And it's just been cleaned up a little more to to only focus on the comprehensive plan map aspect of the amendments. But the proposal before you tonight is the discretionary annexation-related Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment associated with Project LU-three-twenty-twenty-five-zero-zero-zero-five-five eighty-one-fifty Southwest Birchwood Annexation. So just, I wanted to call your attention to a couple of things that have come your way. just I wanted to call your attention to um, a couple of things that have come your way um, this afternoon, this evening, and that have been posted on the Granicus site for anybody who's um, watching this. Uh, so a second supplemental memorandum was um, issued today, so that was dated March twenty sixth. Uh, that included one attached um, piece of public uh, testimony. Um, it included some updated maps and uh, some um, updated findings. Uh, there was a supplement, a supplemental memo dated March nineteenth. Um, I know we didn't start the hearing last week, but uh, I think maybe half hour before we were due to start. Um, you should have received that. So that first memo um, had eight pieces of written testimony attached to it. Um, so between the two memos, um, those PDF packets will have nine pieces of written testimony. We also received a tenth um email uh, that came just a little bit after that second memo was issued today. So uh, there was one more. It's exhibit two point ten, and that was just a standalone um, public testimony PDF, uh, which I think was emailed to all of you not too long ago, and also that should also be up on Granicus. So um, just to go over those things, there was the original staff report dated March twelfth. There was the first memo on the nineteenth, the second memo um, dated the twenty sixth, and then um, also that standalone um, exhibit two point ten um, piece of public testimony for a total of ten um, ten emails and letters that have been received so far. Uh, to give a little bit of context, because a lot of the comments that we've received uh, mention a few different processes that have been happening or may happen in the future. And since we don't see these too often, wanted to run through what this looks like. So um, when somebody is proposing or they're requesting to that the city annex a parcel or a property, um, there's a few different other related processes that might be happening at the same time. And uh, some aspects of the proposal will get heard by Planning Commission, some go straight to city council. Um, some happen in the county before annexation happens, some have to wait until after. So just to run through this, so there's a so that everyone's on the same page of what's happening tonight, what's happening um, in April, and then what could happen uh, once annexation is is effective. So so far, there has been the request for the annexation. Um, that annexation request is not something that Planning Commission um, has any part of. That is something that goes straight to city council. For those interested, that will be at the April fifteenth city council meeting. There will be a public hearing then. Um, and there's annexation specific approval criteria, um, which you could find out more about uh, on council's website and also in uh, future staff reports that will get posted. Um, related to the annexation, there are comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, um, which can be either discretionary or non discretionary. So for tonight, it's pretty narrow. Um, we are only looking at a discretionary annexation related comprehensive plan amendment for the right of way. So not for the property itself. That's something that is considered non discretionary. And in the case of non discretionary um, amendments, those go straight to council without stopping first for Planning Commission. So Planning Commission gets to look at the discretionary CPA approval criteria tonight. For the non discretionary comp plan and zoning map amendments, those will get an April fifteenth council hearing. And then after the annexation becomes effective, that's when we might see um, any number of either building permits through the city of Beaverton for building something on a site or potentially a partition that gets submitted to the city of Beaverton. Um, where the whole partition process, both the preliminary and the final will all take place once the property itself is within city limits. Um, something that uh, was a recent um, change just this Monday. So um, as of the first memo, there were a lot of comments that uh, uh, brought up and an ongoing and under review county partition. Um, that was as of last Wednesday, that was still active, but um, the applicant has requested that it be withdrawn, and the county has actually withdrawn that county application as of this past Monday. So that means that that application is no longer moving forward. This annexation process, if approved by council, will happen. The zoning and comprehensive plan maps will get updated if approved at council. And then only after all of that will the applicant or the owner be able to um, start their preliminary partition process again. But this time under the city instead of the county. So hopefully that clears things up a little bit. Um, I know there there was just a little bit of confusion with so many different case file numbers and notices going out. So for everyone who has provided comments both to the county and and to the city, um, we we've definitely received all of those. So just what we're looking at tonight, um, this is a vicinity map. Um, a few things to note, the uh, light yellow color um, shows what the current extent of Beaverton city limits are. You'll notice that um, like many areas that are sort of on the edge of the the main city limits of the city of Beaverton, um, you know, the city limits follow streets a lot of the time. Um, this side of Birchwood. So for Birchwood, that is to the east of Laurelwood Avenue. Um, not much has actually annexed into the city. Um, if you look at how much appears in yellow for the portion of Birchwood that is to the west of Laurelwood, a lot has already annexed in. And you'll also see that um, properties on both sides of Laurelwood um, have have already been annexed. So um, this would be following sort of the existing edge of this area of town, um, but it would not be anything that we haven't seen before where things slowly come in um, property by property as those properties want to develop over time. Um, I think that's it for now. Uh, the only blue that you'll see on this map um, is is part of the Birchwood Road right of way. Um, prior versions of the maps showed a full cross section, so extending from the the north edge to the south edge of Birchwood. Um, and now it the boundary is being drawn to only show the south half of the Birchwood Road right of way. Um, so it would extend only as far north as the center line instead of going all the way to the other side of the street. So that's another thing that's changed since the last time you may have seen these maps. So something else has changed is um, we're now just uh, bringing the comprehensive plan map amendment to Planning Commission rather than both the CPA and the zoning map amendment. Um, that's because by changing the shape of the the boundary, um, it turns out that it no longer meets the thresholds for discretionary zoning map amendment because we are able to rely just on the non discretionary R five county zone always will be RMC city zone per the urban plan area agreement. That gets to extend up to that center line. So we're no longer asking you to look at both um, sets of discretionary approval criteria. You only have to look at um, what's attachment A of that April twelve, sorry, March twelfth staff report. Um, so the discretionary annexation related comprehensive plan map amendment um, would apply a city land use designation to the right of way being annexed into the city through that separate but concurrent annexation process. Um, it is considered discretionary because the existing Birchwood right of way does not have um, a county zone associated with it. Um, and that's why um, it requires this extra level of going to Planning Commission first. Planning Commission then gets to make a recommendation to council on how to proceed. Um, one thing that's really important to note is that with this um, CPA or the the comprehensive plan map amendment, um, there's there's no specific development being proposed at this time. No uses are being proposed. This is only to allow us to update our maps so that should this portion of right of way and the property be brought into the city limits. Um, we can actually uh, say what the zone or the the comp plan designation should be on the map. So uh, the great, this um, this is an excerpt from chapter three of the comprehensive plan. Um, it be land use elements. And uh, this is only showing the city's uh, neighborhood land land use designations, um, which there are three. Um, and because this uh, part of town is is not within Cooper Mountain, that really only um, has two logical ones of lower density neighborhoods or high density neighborhoods. And um, staff is proposing that the the subject right of way be um, designated lower density neighborhoods. Um, similar to the vicinity map, uh, this shows in very bright yellow, um, what the uh, designation is for all those properties that are within city limits. Um, and also in the sort of there's brown and sort of golden brown colors. Those are Washington County districts. So for all of those properties that have not annexed into the city yet, um, those are the existing county district, um, R five and institutional um, districts. Uh, and then also there's there's one other city one that's really hard to see here, but it it shows up as WA and then a shortened form of county. Anytime you see something that's bright green on one of the land use maps, it uh, it usually appears in the right of way. Rarely will it appear on property itself, but it's just saying that um, when those areas of right of way or property were um, annexed into the city, no um, land use designation was applied to those areas at the time. So it by default just becomes inter Washington County until eventually we'll we'll spend time to actually give it the appropriate zone or um, comp plan designation. Um, but what you can see here is that again in blue, it's that uh, half street um, a bright of way of southwest southwest Birchwood. Um, you could see that uh, that uh, part, that little bit of right of way is surrounded on most sides by Washington County R five um, except to the west, um, already within city limits where it is all lower density neighborhoods. The applicable approval criteria for um, this specific um, comp plan amendment proposal is um, just one of many scenarios that we look at, and it's if 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 something doesn't carry the county institutional um, district, and if there's no like special sub area plans, then we get to look at these um, these two uh, criteria. So because the right of way doesn't have a county zone and it doesn't mean any of the other um, letters A or B, we go to C and then one and two. So either um, we need to make sure that the um, the proposed comp plan designation is consistent with the city comprehensive plan policies in the land use element. That's chapter three. Um, or looking at consistency with the county land use districts. Um, and now this narrows down even further because there is no existing county land use district for right of way. So that kind of just leaves us with the city comp plan policies. Um, uh, if you look at attachment A of that of the staff report, um, you'll see that um, staff identified um, one goal and one policy under that uh, goal for analysis uh, for whether or not lower density neighborhoods is the most appropriate land use designation. Um, and that is the, let's see, it is the sort of like the locational um, locational requirements for applying the lower density neighborhoods designation. Um, to summarize, because this um, portion of the Birchwood right of way is in an area with less walkable access to transit, commercial services, parks, other amenities than high density neighborhood designations. Um, staff finds that lower density neighborhoods is the most appropriate um, land use designation. Okay, so staff is recommending that uh, planning commission recommends to city council to apply the lower density neighborhoods land use designation to the um, Southwest Birchwood Road right of way that's identified on the maps. Um, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed application? Commissioner Holmes?
Thank you, uh, staff Lauren. That was a lot. And I'm so, I guess, just really trying to absorb what the question really is and why. So I guess just to confirm like the applicant is the city of Beaverton?
Yeah, okay. So so when we get the request for annexation, um, a property owner, the that's the person who's going to make that request. Um, but then uh, staff decides if we will then run with it as the applicant. So um, that's why the city is listed as the applicant for for this um, amendment.
So it's prompted by a landowner and then you guys kind of run forward with it. And I guess um, what what is, does it have to be annexed? What is the benefit of annexation like? And is there a cost to? And is there a cost to the landowner or the city or?
It looks like Brian wants to take this one, but I will say that for, for, for most. In most cases, people have to annex to do what they want to eventually do on the property. Um, I think less frequently we see people. Being able to develop in either the county or the city and they might find something that's just a bit more beneficial. In the city. But Brian, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the annexation is not being considered by the commission tonight. Um, and it's not anything to be considered when you're evaluating whether. That the application meets the criteria. Um, it's the, the city council decides whether the annexation is appropriate uh, for the city based on the. Criteria in the code and um, metro code and state law and such. Um, but you know, often as Lauren said. Um, people either want to be in the city for some reason, or they require services from the cities like sewer service. Um, so that's, so that's a frequent reason that they ask.
I guess just to circle back on all that, I know, so we're not talking about annexation, like I just want to be very clear on what the. We are answering today is going to be allowed.
Okay, so. Specifically, um. Planning commission needs to make a recommendation for what. Uh, land use designation should be applied to the. The southwest Birchwood Road right of way as shown on the map. Um, because there's discretion that's required to. Apply a designation where there's currently nothing there now um, to look at. Uh, there's other, there's like the property itself, uh, that's something that requires no discretion. So it will go straight to, to council, but the discretionary. Um, approval criteria, it's, it's a type three process. So that's why it's the first stop is here with planning commission.
So ultimately, we would, if we are approving, we are agreeing that this should be the low density housing designation. Or if I said that right, but that's.
Yeah, so um, you could agree with um, so staff. Made the recommendation in the staff report. Um, and if you were to approve this per the like the staff report. That would get forwarded as the recommendation to council. Um, you could also disagree with staff and propose. Something else. Um, if you do disagree, which probably. I want to circle back on like what would be. Al- also appropriate, you know, because it's, it's mainly residential. So like neighborhoods is more appropriate than other things, but. Um, yes, you, you can agree with what's in the staff report, or you could um. Propose something else that you feel like meets the approval criteria that's identified.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know, these are really weird and especially when we have to sort of like separate out. Right of way versus property, it, it makes it even less straightforward.
Thank you. Commissioner Lago, any questions for staff?
None for me. Uh, Commissioner Holmes, I had a very similar question and I just went with their answer. Thank you.
And Commissioner Stack, any questions?
Um, I do. So I mean, but there is a long term goal here in terms of uh, annexing the, the right of way. And it's to potentially um, move forward with annexation of the adjoining property. So. If that were to occur and it um, does move forward as um, a lower density neighborhood. Uh, what are the potential outcomes in terms of that property subdividing in terms of what could be. Developed there. And I, I'm sure it comes down to property access off the right of way. Can, can you speak a little bit to what that outcome could potentially be for the, for the code?
Um, possibly, I, I guess to, to start, uh, we're only looking at. Applying the, the land use designation and there, there's, we don't know what. Any future owner might want to do with properties that um, abut. This area of the road. So it's really hard to like narrow it down. Um, there, there was one specific proposal when there was the, the partition. When it was still Washington County's partition, um, like application. But that won't necessarily ever be proposed the same way again. Um, so it's, it's hard to say. Um, until. Until that, that property is within city limits and somebody. Um, is representing the owner and wants to, to make a proposal. Um, I mean, at that time, we'll be able to see whether or not it meets the development code. But it's really hard to say like what could happen or what would need to happen for it to. Like be a successful project or to actually move forward. Brian, I don't know if you have anything.
Yeah, I mean, the answer is. This is the street, so there isn't going to be any development on the street. Um, so like we're, we're have a, a quirky and odd, but very focused mission. The planning commission does tonight is to like decide whether to apply this land use designation to the property. Um, the council will then consider. The comprehensive plan and the land use or in the zoning for the property itself. To, if you're curious what that allows, um, it's really just the lowest density residential district that we have. Which would be R M C. Um, so you know, you could, depending on the standards, if you, if you were consistent with the city standards. You might be able to divide a lot. You might be able to add units to a lot as well.
No, I understand that. I, this is, this is potentially opening up the avenue of, I was just curious if you could speak to. What the allowable density might be for that property if it has a lower density property and, and maybe we don't need to go there. It was just a um, a, a way of finding out what potentially could happen in the future, but maybe it's too open ended to answer.
Well, I mean, it's not, um, it's not related to the, to your decision, but it is, it is public information. So the uh, both in the county and in the city, you can do. Single detached houses or middle housing like duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes. Um. Um, I know in the city townhouses and cottage clusters are allowed as well. Um, so, but let, the, the same realm of things. With probably slightly different rules are available in both the county and the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a quick question. It seems like the zoning is R five to the south. Is R five considered low density by the city?
Uh, county, so county R five, um, is. The closest thing to county R five is the city's R M C zone. Um. Which is why no discretion is required and uh, it will. If, if council approves the non-discretionary aspect of the, the zoning map amendment. It just, it, county R five will always be R M C. I think unless there's something, unless there's a footnote in that table for some other part of the city, but. Um, no, they're, they're, they're similar enough and they will always be similar enough that um. That urban plan area agreement says that um, we, we get to sort of do a shortcut instead of having to. To come back to planning commission each time to make that same determination.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Appreciate all the, the insight. We are now at the public testimony portion of this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. Then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And staff has indicated that we do not have any public testimony in favor via the web. Now is the time for public testimony in opposition to the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature. Near Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And Bruce would like to speak. Please state your name and your address, Bruce.
Name is Bruce Gulliver, address eight zero nine zero southwest Birchwood Road. Um. My comment is, uh, uh, in one, my first comment is clarification of what was said. Um, this particular property is owned by, I'll call it a developer. Who rents the property that's there now. His intention was, as he filed with Washington County. To place another property in the front of the house that is already there. Which will be a rental. Um, for your edification and your knowledge. I'm estimating the cost of that would dictate. Rents of forty five hundred to five thousand dollars a month. And that means that probably about thirty three percent of. People in Beaverton would be able to afford that. And that would include people above a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So this is not a low income. Housing opportunity. You just approved something that is exactly that. And this is not what this is. So I wanted you to understand what is being proposed for this, at least it has been proposed in the past. Will it be different? Um, we don't know. But it's not consistent with certainly the state. Bill two thousand one. Which said. A bipartisan bill to provide Oregonians with more housing choices, especially housing choices. More people can afford. And at the range of rents that are allowed there, and by the way, that's about the same price as the house sits there now. Um, this is not a house that most people can afford. So I'd like to state that as uh, as my comment on uh, on the economics of this property. Um, secondly. This would be the only property that I know of in our, in our area. That would have an infill in front of an existing house. There are several even very close to, to our lot that have infill in the back. But this would be the first infill in the front of an existing house. Um, so this would be an unprecedented approval if it's actually made. Um, there are many other things that we. That I am against traffic concerns because of the large number of people who use this particular. Walk um, each day, children, seniors, people in bicycle. Uh, we're about a block and a half from Raleigh Park Library and Raleigh Park Elementary School. Um, and finally, um, I'm personally concerned about a fire hazard, two houses. There in a area that's got many trees, several large trees. What this would mean to risk for all of us here in the neighborhood. So those are my comments and I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for the speaker? It looks like no questions. And do we have any other. Questions in position? Have Steve Geisel. Steve, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Steve Geisel and I live at um, eighty one fifteen southwest Birchwood Road. And I just um, wanted some clarification too, I guess, I'm. So th- this proposal is for half the, half the road that would be. Beaverton and then half the road would belong to the county. And then. How does that work as far as paving it and sewers and other things like that? You know, how does that? I don't really understand how half a road. Works with the county and the city. And that's what we're deciding, that, that's not really, so the, the decision is already made to. Have half the road be the city and the other half of the county. So that's already been decided. And the only thing we're deciding tonight is. Whether it'll be low, a low density housing or not. Is that, is that correct? I mean. It, it's confusing to me.
Sure. Staff, do you have a comment on that?
Um. I just want to make sure, is this some, is this where staff would respond or should staff wait until um. After the.
Probably after, you should wait till after.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we can, we can write down any questions and see what we can answer then.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And do commissioners have any questions for the speaker? Looks like no questions for the speaker.
Well, does, does somebody have an, an answer? Um.
We will, yeah, we will have staff um, answer that as far as the um. As far as the usability of that via the county or the city, uh, staff will comment on that after this next session. And they're going to hold that question for you, or that answer for you.
Okay, well then also just the decision has already been made that it's going to be half the road. That's already a done deal. Is that, that one, and we're not, all we're deciding is what level of, of uh. Density as, as far as the city goes. That's, that's what's deciding tonight. Uh, uh, am I right?
We are deciding tonight on the, on the density. That's correct.
And so the, my question was. So it's the half the road, that, that division of making the road, i- has already been made that. That's, that's going to happen. Is that correct?
Staff will, staff will respond to that. And I'll respond just as soon as we're done here. Thank you, Steve.
I'm sure.
Any other members in op, any other people in opposition? Looks like we're seeing none. Staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony. Any further public testimony in opposition. And so we are moving on to. Moving on to. Those, now is the time for those that are. Neither in favor nor opposed to speak. For those viewing via webinar, Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And our staff has indicated that we do not have. Any public testimony neither in favor nor opposed via the web. Now we have staff with final comments and to Steve's question preferably.
Chair, thanks, uh, Brian Martin, Longridge Plan Manager again. The, uh, the, the. The proposal for you tonight is for the half street, uh, for the comprehensive plan amendment, so that is the, that is the shape. Um, and the, this particular stretch of road will, will be maintained by the county. Um, and even though part of it will be in the city, it will still remain a county responsibility for maintenance. Um, I don't have any other contributions, I don't know if Lauren does, uh otherwise. We can answer your questions if, if you have any.
Um, the, the only thing I would say is that if there's any, if anyone has any questions about. Um. What the, the shape of the proposed annexation boundary might mean for various. Uh. Services or facilities or districts, um, those, those are all things that will be addressed in. The annexation staff report that has to get posted. Um, on March thirty first, so um that will be available very soon. Um, and, um, I think I've been emailing so far with. Um, both people who have uh testified tonight, so if you have more questions, just uh shoot me another email. And um I can help you out.
Great, thank you, Lauren. With final comments completed, I will close the public hearing, now is the time for deliberation. And it is standard procedure, I will randomly call commissioners for discussion on the application. Commissioner Holmes.
Random, but I'm always first.
Ah.
Um, I, I think this topic seems very. Comrelated by the comments and other things that we've received, there's clearly a lot of thoughts about this and, but. Um, I guess I'm at the point where it's out of our hands to. Make a decision on what might happen in the future and if truly we are. Making a determination to confirm and agree that. The land marking, which is light residential is what we're, that feels in line with. The usage based on the chart that we've received, like, because it's not high density, it's not Cooper Mountain, so I don't know that. There's any reason to disagree with. The designation that's proposed to us, so I um am in agreement with the. What we've received to date to approve.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Speck or Lago, any comments?
No comments from me, Chair.
Thank you, Lago.
Um, I'm just in agreement with what Commissioner Holmes said, so nothing else from me.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to continue or recommend approval? Would like to motion to continue or recommend approval.
Um, I will offer a, a move for approval of, I guess it's land use three two zero two five dash zero 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 five three. For eighty one fifty southwest Birchwood annexation. For comprehensive plan map amendment three two zero two five dash zero 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 five three. Um, for the findings presented in the staff uh report dated March twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Perfect, is there a second?
I'm guessing we need to include the, at least the amended dates of the reports.
The commissioners, if I may just jump in to assist with the motion, uh, I just want to make sure uh it, it. Your intent is clear that it also includes the staff supplemental memos. And one of them is, I believe is dated today, um, and in addition, in addition, this is. Uh, you know, not your typical application, you're not actually approving it, but you're recommending approval to city council.
Thank you, Robin. So we will include that, those amendments into Commissioner Speck's. Motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, is there any discussion? It's like no discussion, a vote will be taken by roll call, when your name is called, please say yea or nay, Commissioner Lago.
Yay.
Commissioner Speck.
Yay.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah.
And Chair Adams is a yea as well, with that, we have approval. And the motion passes. The planning commission's recommendation will be memoral- memorized in land use orders. And will be provided to all parties that provide oral or written testimony, the planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the city council. Council will hold a hearing and make final decision on this application. We are now adjourned at eight oh three, thank you for everyone's time this evening.